This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, August 3. Please stand for your invocation. I am Tamika Farr, Restoration and Deliverance Outreach Ministries, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let us pray. Father God, we come to you this morning as umbers. We know how this morning, God. We ask you to bless the city councilmen as they begin to have the meeting this morning, God. We ask that everything go according to your word, God. We thank you for everybody that's here on this morning, God. We thank you for every city councilman, God. We ask that everything come to agreement, oh, God. We ask that you just have your way this morning, God. God, we ask that everybody that walked through this door, oh, God, that they be educated with wisdom and knowledge, oh, God. We thank you for what you're about to do on this day, oh, God. And when we leave out of this place, oh, God, we'll leave out better than we came in. God, we thank you that we woke up this morning and had the activity of our limbs, oh, God. And we just asking that you dispatch your angels in this place right now. Dispatch Gabriel and Michael right now to sit in the room with us this morning, God, to bless us, to keep us, God, in each and every way, God. And all these many blessings, we asking in your darling son Jesus' name, and we counting it done now, and when everybody said, amen.
Amen. For the Pledge of Allegiance, to Israel, come in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your God, and in Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Just before we would take our seats, we ask that we would observe a moment of silence in memory of a longtime resident of the Happy Hill Community, Ms. Janice Williams, mother, community activist, very active in her congregation, and almost a second parent to many who live out in the Chin Street community, who were informed of her passing untimely a couple of days ago. They asked that we would remember her and her life and legacy in a moment of silence.
Broke Hall, President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small, Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory. Statement of rules.
Good morning.
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 We first would ask that any and all persons will turn off or silence all of your electronic devices upon entering the meeting. Any person wishing or desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, speaker must clearly state for the record his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on an un-adjourned item must contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the Tuesday in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 p.m. All of your commentary must be pertinent to City of Mobile business, and any person who hasn't given that proper notice won't be allowed to address the council. Speakers are granted three minutes to make their presentation. A bell will sound to indicate the end of the second minute, which means that one minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council member. We ask that you make all of your statements and inquiries to myself as I serve as chair, and in that case, any council member who wishes to respond or have an ability to speak will be recognized. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we are appreciative of your interest in our municipal government.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see everybody here this morning. Those who have masks on, appreciate you wearing the mask. That will kind of lead into my opening remarks this morning. You know, the latest data from the Mobile County Health Department continues to show that cases are increasing and as are the hospitalizations related to the new variant of COVID-19. To ensure consistency of our public services, our cities updated our health and safety protocols for employees. We sent out a letter on all-city email yesterday to the city employees outlining the changes that will be, that we will start implementing immediately. One of those is that we've restricted what we are referring to as nonessential travel for employees. And some of these things are things that we did during the previous crisis, the early stages of the, you know, let's say, 18 months ago, 16 months ago. And so, we've looked at those items that we thought were the most effective, and those are the ones that we're putting back in place for this point in time. You know, all city employees, you know, are being encouraged to get vaccinated against the COVID-19. As many of you know, we've had an ongoing relationship with USA Health. They have agreed to come to Government Plaza tomorrow to locate in the multipurpose room. At that point in time, any and all city employees, as well as county employees, the county employees to include our judicial system, now, they can go to the multipurpose room and be vaccinated. So, that's what, yeah, the employees and their families may go to the multipurpose room tomorrow between 1:00 and 5:00 and be vaccinated. If you have concerns about being vaccinated at that time, you will have an opportunity to engage with the health officials there to answer any questions that you may have, you know, concerning getting a shot. You know, also, one of the other things that we're encouraging our employees to do, if where applicable and where you can have video conferencing instead of in-person meetings, we're suggesting, you know, that they do that. Every day, we're in contact with the local hospital CMOs, with the county health department, and not necessarily every day, but almost on a daily basis with the state health department, being apprised of the latest trends, the latest information, the latest data. And we will continue to do that as we try to make informed decisions to alert not just our employees, but the citizens of Mobile of the things that they should do to protect themselves from the COVID Delta variant. You know, it was explained to me in simple terms yesterday by one of my healthcare providers is that this variant is 1,000 times more violent than, or 1,000 times more infectious than the Alpha variant. So, even though you've had the disease possibly, or you've had the shots and vaccinations, so you have antibodies to protect yourself, the challenge is, if it's 1,000 times more infectious than the Alpha variant, you can see that you may not have enough antibodies whether you had the disease or whether you've had the vaccine. And that's why people that have had the vaccine, you know, some are getting sick, but also some who also maybe have had the disease early on. Point is, though, is that you are much better protected by either having previously had COVID or having had the vaccine, or both. So, I would again encourage everybody to please seriously consider this because now we're seeing it transition down into a lot younger age group than what was initially, that we were initially dealing with. On a completely different note, as you travel around downtown Mobile, or downtown and midtown, one of the things that you'll see, other than a lot of road construction, which we know is an inconvenience for a lot of people, but you'll see in some roads in these neighborhoods, we're placing "No Trucks Allowed" signs. And this has to do with the box trucks that are maybe transitioning through neighborhoods or traveling through neighborhoods. And the reason is, we're trying to protect those neighborhoods, the tree canopy in those neighborhoods. Along our main thoroughfares, though, there are requirements that we keep a certain height restriction or clearance for trucks as they travel down those main thoroughfares. So, you will see some main, some tree trimming on the main thoroughfares that's being done in accordance with, I'd say, the outline, the guidelines that we should follow from practicing good forestry practices for the trees, but also, keep in mind, we have that responsibility with the Department of Transportation, you know, to make sure those thoroughfares don't encumber the traveling of the large trucks and commerce up and down them. I'll give you an example. During COVID, and excuse me, during the storms last year, when we were without electrical power, and everybody's wanting their power turned on, Alabama Power Company had a truck with a huge transformer on it traveling down one of our main thoroughfares that had a posted clearance level of a certain number of feet. That transformer hit a tree limb and knocked off and destroyed the transformer. Those are the kind of issues that most citizens don't realize that we have to deal with, you know, as far as responsibility to keep our main thoroughfares so that we can travel freely up and down them. Now, finally, on another note, today is a birthday. It's a big birthday. I don't know that any of us have ever had a birthday this old, but having said that, I'll say that right now, I would ask, we have joining us, and Captain Snowden, I would ask you to help me with these proclamations, but I would ask ATC Mobile Captain Chris Hustler Halsar and Command Master Chief Wes Powell, and if y'all would join us at the podium in the area of the podium. And we have Sector Mobile Captain Cassie Kitchen, Command Master Chief Zachary Ayers, and then the Strike Team, Gulf Strike Team Lieutenant Commander Joseph Smith. And so, I will now come to the podium and read the proclamation. Joe, I'll let you hand those out. Okay. The proclamation reads, whereas the Sector Mobile area of responsibility spans four states, five deep water ports, and 1,700 nautical miles of inland river and coastal waterways. Sector Mobile carries out operations in support of search and rescue, law enforcement, and homeland security, enforcing all federal laws in the maritime domain, protecting living marine resources, and responding to reports of marine pollution. Sector Mobile also ensures maritime safety and security, servicing aged navigation, inspecting and investigating domestic vessels and facilities, and conducting extensive examinations of foreign vessels intending to enter the U.S. Sector Mobile conducts regularly oversight on 45% of the nation's shipbuilding. Whereas Aviation Training Center is a multi-mission unit acting as the Coast Guard Aviation and Capabilities Development Center, supporting the training and standardization of over 2,300 pilots and air crews, and serves as an operational air station supporting the Eighth Coast Guard District and Atlantic Area. In addition to training, ATC's Operations Department conducts a full spectrum of missions, including search and rescue, marine fisheries enforcement, homeland security, and marine environmental protection. ATC's fixed and rotary wing assets have been used to support major contingencies and in support of natural disasters. And whereas the Gulf Strike Team is one of three in the United States based on geographical regions, Atlantic, Gulf, and Pacific. The GST is recognized worldwide as the expert response authority in preparation for and response to oil discharges, hazardous substance releases, weapons of mass destruction incidents, and man-made or natural disasters. The GST maintains a cadre of highly trained responders to execute its Coast Guard mission. Now, therefore, I, William S. Simpson, the 108th Mayor of the City of Mobile, do hereby formally recognize August 4 as Coast Guard Day. 231 years of service in the City of Mobile, done on the City of Mobile on this third day of August 2021. Simple parrotus. Congratulations. So, I think we'll go outside, and we'll have a picture made, and then I'll come running back in so we can all be excused right now. Thank you, councilman. Mr. President, I believe that concludes the mayor's remarks.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Now, I'm City Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for waiver of the noise ordinance November 24th and 25th on Charmaine Circle East, September 17th and 18th on Dolphin Street, August 8th on Brossett Street, February 5th, 2022, at the Bragg Mitchell Mansion, and August 21st on Angus Drive North.
So moved. Certainly. It probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Sabrina Mass.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Sabrina Mass, 1050 Belvedere Circle West, Mobile, Alabama, 36606. First of all, saying good morning to the mayor's administration and the city council representatives. Thank you for your services. And I am here today to speak on the ARP as a representative of the Human Relations Commission as we have seven people on the panel that were selected by the mayor and the city council. And we definitely appreciate you guys for considering us and putting us on that commission. So, I'm here to ask the city council and the administration during the consideration of the ARP that we have some of the funds distributed to our different districts from the ARP for different things that we want to collaborate on in our districts, such as having maybe some events, guest speakers about important issues and topics from maybe the crime aspect in different districts to finance or anything that we feel is good for our districts. So, the president, Ms. Kim Garrett, she will be submitting those proposals to you guys. So, now, the question I have, was the deadline July 30th or is it August 15? Because we're kind of getting some mixed feedback on the deadline that was proposed.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
I did speak with Ms. Garrett, and there's been a little confusion with our nonprofits. Many of our nonprofits are proposing the smaller things that will go inside of bucket two, which is our negative impact area. And so, I did speak with Ms. Garrett, and the things that they are asking for, and I did receive her budget, are the things that we will put in an RFP process for after the ARP funds have been approved. And so, all of the things that most of the citizens and the nonprofits are asking for will be within those social service assistance dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Anitra. And also, just to chime in, am I three minutes over?
I believe that's two minutes.
I'm sorry. Also, just to say this about the ARP, I may not agree with a lot of things that people have on our, you know, our city leaders, even the mayor, but I will say this, you know, as you know, I'm kind of nosy, and I read thoroughly on the city business because that's my job. I will say, Mayor Simpson, that I do agree with your proposal and the package that you have put together, because guess what? I live over on, in the DIP area of Horst Smith's Road, and that package is needed. It's needed. I'm the sole person in my subdivision, and I have for years, that makes sure that the police stay in my subdivision. They are always there. They have built relations with my subdivision and the kids, the community. We sleep at night. We sleep very well at night in my subdivision because the police, they stay in, you know, on the beat. Thank you, Director Batiste. And at that time, it was Chief Barbara. So, I would say that community environment works. We have to work with our police. I know, I got to go. And one more thing, the long horns are now in the SEC.
Yes, all right. Thank you, Ms. Mass.
Teresa Bedes regarding ARP.
I can't remember. We got an email from this person. And in detail.
Okay.
Good morning, President Manzi, to the council, to the administration. My name is Teresa Bedes. The address is 602 Bel Air Boulevard, Suite 7, Mobile, Alabama, 36606. I come before this body once again representing the South Alabama Economic Roundtable, further known as SAIR. SAIR is a coalition of community leaders from the business, for-profit, and nonprofit in faith-based communities. As you recall, I addressed this body on June 29. At that time, I spoke in opposition to the mayor's proposed People's First Plan for the usage of the 58.2 million allocation to Mobile under the American Rescue Plan pursuant to the President Biden's Executive Order 13985. Our opposition was threefold. One, although the People's First Plan, the people or the city had no input, and especially for those for whom the federal allocations were to benefit. Secondly, the proposed plan did not, upon cursory review, go far enough into addressing the needs of citizens. And thirdly, the unnecessarily speed of the proposed budget's development under the mayor's administration. Notwithstanding in the spirit, in the intent of the American Rescue Plan on June 29, SAIR requested additional time, four weeks, to gather citizens' input, complete a more thorough review of the mayor's plan, and draft a budget slash plan that spoke to the identified needs as determined by the people in Mobile. Since June 29, we have worked diligently to accomplish our goals and be accountable to the people of Mobile. In order to hear, gather, and compile citizen feedback, we have hosted two citywide virtual Zoom calls, held six in-person meetings, one each in districts 1, 3, 5, and 7, and two meetings in District 2. We have also met with each city council member, with the exception of Councilperson Williams, who refused to meet with us. We met with various key members of the mayor's staff and had a confirmed meeting with the mayor, but he was not present with no explanation. In essence, our time, notwithstanding the shortage of time, we have completed our task and come this morning with a proposed budget. Not only have we listened to the people, but we have, in spirit of collaboration with the mayor's administration, developed a budget that takes into consideration the administration's proposed budget. SAIR respectfully asks that the council would accept this proposal. And Ms. Lambert, if you would provide that to them. Another question that we have, Mr. Manzi, is how would you like for me at this time to proceed with our presentation of the proposal, or is that necessary at this time?
Well, with time. Well, is your proposal enclosed yet?
It is.
Well, we really, we really don't have the confines of the allotted time. The ability for much further commentary, but I can assure you that we have, all of us have been presented with the proposal, and we'll certainly take this under advisement. And I know I'm personally willing to meet, to go over with you if that's necessary.
We are available. We make ourselves available to the council and administration to do that. We also would ask, how do we know fair consideration would be given to this proposal? And we ask that because we have been told.
I'm so sorry. Your time is up.
Okay.
But we certainly appreciate the time and energy and effort that you've put into, you and the roundtable members have put into this proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Danny Patterson, 7500 Quincy Drive, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. I come to make sure that regarding the ARP, that we do understand the process. We do understand that there are several groups that will be a part of this, that will want to submit proposals into the city and to be funded according to the guidelines and according to what Treasury has posted. But I guess our group, just like other groups in this room, would like to truly make sure we understand that it is transparent and that we understand how the process is going to go forward. We understand that there was supposed to be, we thought, a public hearing. We don't know when that may be held because it was mentioned at one of the meetings on the 29th, June 29. We also want to make sure that there was something, there was a mentioning of a GAFIS project, that it was off the table, and then we heard in another meeting that it was on the table or still on the table. We're getting mixed signals from this process, and we want to make sure there's clarity. Also, a lot of what we're proposing as a member of the South Alabama Economic Roundtable is a movement of some of the funds from one bucket to another to allow for more things that the community people are telling us, people in the community are telling us that they need. There was no mentioning of some of these items, food insecurity, mental health, et cetera. So, you know, we know you don't have time to go through this now, but at some point, we want to get the same type of consideration that you would give to these types of proposals because ours is very comprehensive, and we want to make sure that we hear what you are looking for and hear what you say and understand how it fits and what we proposed. One other thing, a lot of the funding that was moved is from the category on premium pay, and we're basing our, we're basing our adjustments in our proposed budget on essential workers, on who's essential. And that's an issue for us to make sure that we understand who is essential to get premium pay. So, you'll notice that some of the adjustments we're making, that we've made in our proposal, do address that line item. I think that's all we have for this time, at this time. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Patterson? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To the mayor, his staff, council. I am Marjorie Calhoun. I reside at 6412 Shetland Court, Mobile, Alabama, 36695. I am here to represent the Mobile Public Library as director of Mobile Public Library. I have with me Mr. Robert Hyde, who is our comptroller. Our, my purpose for being here is quite simple. We are trying to determine or make sure that we are not forgotten in the distribution of the ARP funds. We have 150 employees at Mobile Public Library. If we give the bonus that everyone is supposed to get as city employees, that would equal to around $600,000 for us. And so, we want to make sure that we are included in the distribution of these funds so we won't have to take it out of our regular funds. We have a history at Mobile Public Library of matching anything that the city gives to regular city employees, and on occasion, we've not been included, and we had to take that out of our funding. So, we want to make sure this time that this money will come out of the ARP funds. We have provided service to the city over the pandemic. Our normal 2019 numbers were 1.2 million visitors a year and 1.5 million circulations per year. Even during the pandemic last year, we had over 600,000 visitors. We have over 200,000 card users. So, we try to do the best we can to provide service to the city, and our goal, like I say, is just to be included, and we would hope that the mayor and everyone would remember us. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but can the administration answer that about?
In regards to premium pay, it's restricted by guidelines to essential city workers. And so the definition of a city worker already exists, which was disseminated throughout the, these particular employees, even though paid through our payroll, we actually receive a fee for that payment. They're not considered city employees.
They've gotten raises in the past. They didn't this last time, but that was the first time that ever happened. They've always been considered city employees.
They are not considered city employees, but they are correct in that when we did cost of living adjustments for city employees, they did track with us, but that was a general fund contribution from the city. That's, it's different with the ARP funding. We're restricted by the guidelines.
Could, would the administration consider if they listed their essential employees? Because it is a huge service for our citizens. So is there something that prohibits that from happening? I mean, there, I mean, you can hardly not know a citizen that hadn't been through the library, and especially during the pandemic because it was a release for people to be able to go when they set up those, like pickup and things. They really went out of their way to make the service available. They adopted, just like restaurants did, so that there were some minimal contact. So is there a prohibited law that says they can't get it as a resource for this community?
ARP prohibits, right?
Let me let Michael Burson answer the legal issue on that.
They need to be essential employees. So if they're not technically employees of the city, then it's.
Even though they provide a huge service for our citizens?
Even though if they provide services, if they're not an essential employee, it's, the premium pay is meant for employees.
If you look at the original agreement that goes back almost 100 years or more, the city of Mobile saw the library service as an, you know, as a service for the citizens of Mobile, a free public library. It was like our way of doing education. We're not in charge of education, but the library service is a huge educational resource for our citizens. Is there any other, is there any other service that's provided for this, for our citizens that is similar to the library? Is there any other resource to anybody's knowledge?
You know, Mr. President. There are multiple organizations that employ individuals who are not employed by the city of Mobile who provide services to the public.
Those are nonprofits. This is a public library. This is the cities, initially, it was the cities. They merged and became county, but we didn't resource the counties' libraries. We only resourced with our economic incentives, things that were in the corporate limits of the city of Mobile.
The city owns all of our buildings, and we are not allowed to own property.
I just, I don't know. I mean, if there's a law against it, then, but then how do you give to nonprofit groups? How is that, they weren't essential workers?
Right, those are essential services that can apply, and that's what Anitra Henderson was referring.
How much is in that, in that bucket for nonprofits, what's the total?
It's in the bucket of negative economic impact recovery, and there's $17 million currently.
How much?
I'm sorry, $17 million in that. But that includes more than social service. That is 5.1 million that's going towards the gun violence in different areas. So what they are asking for would have to come out of premium pay, and the Treasury has put specific guidelines on how you can do that form of premium pay. So technically, even though they're a nonprofit, they could not apply for social service assistance funds to go towards a incentive.
There'd be no bucket for library employees?
Not for pay. If there was an RFP process for them to have some form of service to the community, they could apply for those funds, but not for an incentive for their employees.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson and then Mayor Stimson.
I'll let Mayor Stimson.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll hear.
We've been advised by legal counsel that they do not qualify, okay? In addition to Mr. Burson, who is legal counsel for the ARP. And so to us, it's a legal question. I don't know that Director Barber and I are prepared today to answer those, your question because it pertains to the legality of what the ARP says. So, you know, a suggestion could be that the city attorney, Mr. Burson, and I'll get with the city council attorney, and we'll make a determination.
I would hope there would be something that could be done for those employees that, you know, gave service to our citizens in our free public library service. That'd be great.
Okay. It would be very difficult for us to explain to our employees why they would not get the funding and the bonus, and everybody else is getting it because we do consider ourselves city employees.
Yes, ma'am.
And we provide a service to the community.
Mr. Richardson.
Director Calhoun, how many employees do you have at the Mobile?
We have 150 employees. And so we've calculated that what the bonus would cost us around $600,000.
$600,000 with 150 employees. Were you at one time part of the city of Mobile?
We've considered ourselves a part of the city of Mobile by virtue of legislation that created the Mobile Public Library.
Okay, so when did you not become a part of Mobile? When was you?
We, on occasions or in the past, a bonus or raise was given, and we weren't included. But what we have done is always stepped up. Our board has always ensured that we stepped up and we still provided the same benefit to our employees that other city employees got. We didn't leave them out in the cold. Of course, that cost us because that money could have been used for resources otherwise, or building improvements, or capital improvements or something. But we just coughed up the money if the city didn't give it to us because we thought it was important that the library people not feel like they were being left out or they were being treated second class.
And your insurance care is not the same as the city of Mobile?
It's the city of Mobile.
It is the same?
It's the same as the city of Mobile.
Okay.
And when we retire, we retire from the city of Mobile.
You retire from the city of Mobile?
That's right.
Okay, it seems to me that you all been cut off. You all been cut off. You, we have a cutoff banestration. I was cut off. You all was cut off, so.
Mr. Richardson.
If I told a lie, call it out. Ain't no rules of the council. I ain't called nobody's name. The council said you can't call nobody. I didn't call a soul name. But if the rock hits you, you need to scream. All right, let's rock and roll. And I hope in due time in the future, you'll be cut back on.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So our, the goal at this point, you all, Mr. Aldich, you're gonna get with, I'm assuming, Mr. Woods, Mr. Burson, and make certain from a legal perspective what avenues might be available or aren't available? Is that how we're moving forward?
I'll talk to him, yes, sir.
Thank you. If you could apprise us of what you found out and base it all of that in law, if you could surprise us with that, it certainly would be appreciated. Thank you all.
Patsy Alexander regarding ARP.
Hello, Mayor Stimson, City Council. Thank you for giving me three seconds, three minutes to respond. My name is Patsy Alexander. I'm the executive director of Holiday Transitional Center. We are 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation.
Could you give us your address, please?
The building is located at 1805 Government Street. That's 36605. But I reside at 6721 Candlelight Court, 36695.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. I'm here also to speak about the home American Rescue Plan. I'm associate also with the South Alabama Economic Roundtable. We have their proposal, and I'd like to add my proposal. I think you should have a copy of this. I gave it to you early. I prepared it in a rush, so please forgive me any typos that I could have made. I'm not the best typer in the world. But what we do, we support, we empower and equip women who are experiencing homelessness and their goal to achieve permanent affordable housing for themselves. It's all about housing. And as you know, the homeless problem in Mobile, Alabama, I don't need to go into details about it, it's really great. But the major thing that we're working with the women because there's no facilities located in Mobile, Alabama, the seat of Mobile, where give the women the ability to grow, to develop, to achieve to a certain order where they can be independent, whereas where they can not only purchase, but purchase their homes. There are so many women that are living out on the street, unsheltered. Right now in Mobile, Alabama, we have more women, unsheltered, living unsheltered than the ones who homeless, living sheltered homeless. Let me make sure you understood what I just said. There's more women living unsheltered, homeless women living unsheltered than homeless women that are living sheltered in Mobile, Alabama. They're living, we checked, believe me, they're living in the forest. They're living behind the different organizations. So what you see in front of you, I have a proposal. Could you take consideration? We've renovated the building at 1505, at 1505 Government Street. All I'm asking for the city of Mobile to do, this is your building. It's not my building. This is a public building. It's a 501(c)(3) corporation. So this building has been sitting at a blight on the community for over 15 years. So all I'm asking is to help with the renovation of this expense because it's gonna make a difference to the community. We are right across the street from this beautiful waterfall, this beautiful park. So let's make a difference. It's a shame they walked on Government Street and you see that dilapidated buildings on the left-hand side opposite from this beautiful park, Memorial Park. We want to make a difference in this community. We love this community. So please, please take in consideration of this application, the proposal I gave you. Is there any questions?
Any questions of Ms. Alexander? Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Reggie Hill regarding ordinance 64026, Resolution 31567, ordinance six, I'm sorry, Resolution 60606 and 03607.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Gonna work backwards, 03607. I want to commend Ms. Jackson. That's my former middle school teacher, so I'm glad to see that appointment being made. Then I'm gonna move on to 60-606. It is scary, scary to think that we would go beyond the usage of the Zogby Act and how it should be implemented. Anytime that we believe that an administration, regardless of who's in office, can instruct the councillors on what to do, that's something scary. That even has to come to the agenda. That's scary. So I hope that we're considering that. I heard that it's gonna be laid over or maybe voted on today. Whatever the matter is, please know the difference and why the Zogby Act was even put in place. So the idea that we're going to do that, that's scary and that is dangerous going forward for any matters. 64-026, I see that this is gonna be laid over as well, so I won't harp on it much. But as well, we saw where yet again the administration would be able to approve zoning changes without coming to the council. Again, that is scary. And the idea that we are not just overly excited about getting that change, that shows a lot. We cannot afford to do that. Small groups don't have the opportunity that other developers have. And unless we keep the code in a manner that is gonna represent them as well, we're gonna see a lot of more, excuse me, we're gonna see a lot more of the disparities that our underserved communities witness day in and day out. So please consider that as well. Now, this final piece, which I'm hoping I'm gonna have a little more time to express on, is ARP. And it's so great to see as many citizens as we have here today. It's quite rare to have citizen participation during this municipal government process, so I'm glad to see that. But there was a comment that was made about legal advice, legal counseling, said that certain people should not receive these resources. I would like to know what is the definition of essential worker? That's the first thing. We also know that legal counseling has advised people to withstand resources that were approved unanimously by this council from organizations that could go in and fix a lot of the problems that we're seeing. We're also seeing where legal counseling advised the administration to sue the city council. So I don't necessarily know that the legal counseling is a merit to why we can make this type of decision, particularly for something as special as Mobile Public Library. Now, there's a confusion about the dates. We've heard July 30th, August 15th. And then we had a question from a presenter today, and administration still didn't have a date, but gave some finessing response of what might be happening sometime down the line with a second wave of resources. Success for the future, we submitted something before the deadline, the original date. So I would like to know what organizations have submitted paperwork? What organizations are being considered towards this? There was no recommendation, even from the finance committee meeting, on how we should move forward. This is discussed today, pre-council as well. So a lot of us are just confused. No one knows what's going on. That's lacking in leadership. So I know my time is a lot, but I hope those things can be afforded to the public. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Yes, sir.
Ordinance is held over. 64026, ordinance to amend and restate Chapter 64 of the City Code zoning.
Hold over two weeks.
Two weeks.
Say it again, Mr. Davis.
Zoning order.
Two weeks.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move to second, end of discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolution's held over, 31567, adopt the U.S. Treasury ARP action plan.
Move to hold over one week till August 10th.
Second.
Probably move to second, end of discussion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis?
I said this at the pre-council meeting, but I'll go ahead and say it again because we have some people, maybe that are here now that weren't there. The city council finance committee met last week with the members of the administration and had opportunity to ask questions in addition to the council, to committee members that we had, all of the other council members here. As a result of that, it's the recommendation of the chairman of the finance committee that the proposed, the proposal submitted by the administration be adopted. We also, I also announced that the matter, of course, would come up again today, but that, but that we intend, that it was appropriate that we vote on it next week, August 10th. What we've said all along is that the deadline to get our proposal into the federal government is the end of this month. Whatever the council passes needs to be put in appropriate form by the administration before it's submitted. We wanted to allow at least two weeks' time for that to happen. So we need to act next week. Anybody who has any additional information to give to the council can send it to the clerk. The clerk will get it to us. I would urge anybody that has suggestions to make those suggestions as specific as possible. The administration's proposal is on the city's website. You know, to me, what I'm, and I'm just speaking for myself right now. When I think, when I think about specific suggestions, I'm thinking about saying, more money here to be taken from here. Take money from here and put it to here. So we know where you're suggesting that more money be spent and where are you suggesting the money from that come from. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you very much. The, the response was not a refusal, by the way, for the roundtable. I simply said I'm the wrong person to be speaking to. We don't have a staff. We don't have the, the. We don't have a staff, we don't have the details of the law. This is an administrative action. And I'm not going to meet with individuals that haven't worked to at least a standstill or some, some agreement with the administration. The council is not the starting spot for any action unless it is legislation. And in this case, that is not. This is a framework, it's a plan, it's an option, it's a course of action, it's whatever you want to call it. But it is firmly in the administration's hands. And it is for the, those who want to interact with the administration or want to be a part of this ARP, they need to go to the administration. To come to the council and ask for the council to, to change it is simply out of order. And so I want to, I want to make that very clear. The administration has a plan. It is broad-based, it is intentionally broad-based. So as we are going through this process, we can get our foot in the door and we can get the monies here and we don't miss any gates whatsoever. So please understand that. They're flooding us with emails and twenty-page reports about details on how you're going to spend the money. It's really, it's not going to be up to the council until it becomes a contract with either you or with someone that's going to provide another service or product. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm going, if there's no objection, I'll skip the next two and move to the ones that we're laying over.
No.
Take those, okay. Zero-three-five-eight-four and zero-three-five-eight-five are reappointing Carlos Finley and Robert Thomas as part-time municipal judges.
Move to lay over six weeks.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Clerk? I intend to lay over six-zero-six for a week.
I'm sorry, which one?
Six-zero-six, six-zero-six oh six.
Okay.
To lay over a week.
Where are you?
Sixty-six-zero-six, resolve that all members of the city council should be allowed unhindered access to their official city email accounts.
What's your level for a week?
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion?
Was it one week? Is that what it is? He asked for one week.
You want more, you want two weeks?
No, I'm, I'm. Six weeks.
Oh, no.
That's what I asked for.
No, John, I ain't going on six weeks.
May, may I ask why we're laying it over?
We have, I would like for the full council to consider this. We have two council members out. This is a serious matter. I think all members of the city council should be sitting here.
No, I'm not laying it over.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm going to simply say, Mr. President, that we don't make laws more clear by writing more laws or by writing resolutions in this case. It simply is a difference in opinion on what Zogby says. And no resolution or any amount of talk or rhetoric is going to change it. That's just that. This matter has been resolved and it's time to simply move on.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
We haven't had a legal opinion, we, we've had a legal opinion on the side of the council, from the council side. We've had any kind of opinions from administration on this. Administration is quiet as a mouse on this.
What's before us, Mr. President, is whether we're going to lay it over or not.
Right. We have a motion.
And a second.
It's been seconded. We have a discussion on the motion. Any further discussion? That we lay it over for a period of two weeks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Well, item fails.
Item fails to lay over, so we take it up on its merits.
Right. Fails to lay over, so Madam City Clerk, call it in its regular order, please.
Okay, zero-one, resolution zero-one-five-eight-two, authorize lease agreement with Alabama Power Company and SMG for storm staging site at Civic Center. Zero-one-five-eight-three, authorize a foreign trade zone operator agreement with Airbus Americas, Inc. Zero-eight-five-eight-six, approve purchase order to Jack Donahue Company for Ford Transit cargo van for motor pool. Zero-eight-five-eight-seven, approve item-based bid for firefighters' helmets and from Sunbelt Fire. Zero-eight-five-eight-eight, approve purchase order to Dennis Aluminum Products for decorative street signposts for the Traffic Engineering Department. Zero-eight-five-eight-nine, approve purchase order to Image Trend for annual renewal of software for the Fire Department. Zero-eight-five-nine-zero, approve purchase orders for fuel for Wave Transit. Zero-eight-five-nine-one, approve purchase order to Sherwin-Williams for paint for downtown pole painting. Zero, I'm sorry, I forgot about this one we're supposed to table. Twenty-one-five-nine-three, authorize service contract with Port City Industrial for overhead garage doors, counters, shutters, electronic gate services at various city facilities. Twenty-one-five-nine-four, authorize contract with RouteWare for route management soft, software for garbage collection services. Twenty-one-five-nine-five, authorize service contract with Johnson Controls for DDC, control system inspection and preventative maintenance at the History Museum of Mobile. Twenty-one-five-nine-six, approve contract extension with Premium Parking of Alabama for cruise terminal parking management. Sixty-five-nine-seven, five-nine-eight, five-nine-nine, and six-hundred are approving settlement agreements and release of claims. Sixty-six-zero-one, approve issuance of revenue bonds by the Infirmary Health System Special Care Facilities Authority of Mobile. Sixty-six-zero-six, resolve that all members of the city council should be allowed unhindered access to their official city email accounts.
You better take that one separate.
I'll take that one separate, okay. Okay, we're removing sixty-six-zero-six.
So move.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
I'd like to discuss zero-eight-five-nine-one, which is the painting for the downtown. And I imagine those are, when you say pole painting, are we talking about the lighting, the signal poles? Are we talking about street sign poles?
All, all the above.
Okay, excellent. I know when my office has approached the administration about painting services on city street signs, I was told that there weren't funds available. And obviously, it's a priority to do the downtown. I have personally worked by using discretionary funds and the neighborhood, if it has an association, is able to chip in the other half in order to, to have the poles painted and they even pay for the, the absolutely painting. It never sends the city employees out. Will these be city employees painting?
Yes, the plan is right now, but this paint is just for the city to have a stock of this paint, period, for, for wherever we decide and can send the employees to go paint.
Okay, so you're saying there is hope then for some neighborhoods that don't have associations but have poles that are peeling and, and are unattractive in their neighborhoods, that it could be, some of those funds could be used and city employees could come out?
If those poles are maintained by the city, yes.
Like in Pinehurst, that's a perfect example.
I'd have to look and see.
Yeah, no, that's a city, definitely, because they didn't have a developer in there, the city did everything. Okay, it's just good for me to know. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Zero-nine-five-nine-two, reallocate monies from general fund police operating account.
Move the table.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sixty-six-zero-six, resolve that all members of the city council should be allowed unhindered access to their official city email accounts.
So move.
I'll bring it up second for discussion.
We probably moved to second, any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Ms. Rich?
I received correspondence from a city employee. And this correspondence required me to take cyber training. Or else my email would be cut off. My emphasis is on, is on who sent me the correspondence. It's a city employee directing an elected official what to do. Absolutely absurd. So what I did, I felt like that was an illegal order. So I requested the council attorney to provide a legal opinion as to whether or not not only a city, city employee, anybody in the administration, including the mayor, can direct the council and carry out its responsibilities. So at this point, I would like for our attorney, Mr. Aldis, to share with us his opinion.
I don't think that the employee ought to be telling you all what to do.
Can you say again? Your, your, your microphone is, can you put it up so we? There we go.
I don't think the employee should be directing elected officials what to do.
Okay, that's the official legal opinion. An employee should not be directing elected officials in what to do. The Zogby Act, eleven forty-four C-twenty-one, says, "All legislative powers of the city, including determination of all matter of legislative policy, shall be vested in the council without limitation." Not only can we pass the laws, but legislative policy, set policy for everybody to go by. And administration can set policy for administrative employees, but for everybody, that's, that's a council responsibility. So you got this employee who has ordered the judges to take cyber training? What matter of overreach? This sound like an administration that just lost in Washington. This has gone way overboard, this overreach here. And it seemed like to me that this council, some members of this council are saying, employees of the administration should tell the council what to do. If they don't support this, that's exactly what they're saying. That I believe that any, any employee of the administration can write the council a letter and saying that you should not park in that garage anymore and council need to find them another place to park. That's what you're saying. Fred Richardson said to this, no, I'm not opposed to cyber training. I'm opposed to being required to take cyber training. So my email was cut off for almost two weeks. Yesterday, my email was cut on. I took the cyber training only after my email was cut off, because you're not going to use no email to thread Fred Richardson. I think this is a sad day for the city. This is not nothing new. This overreach is not anything new. The council has had this problem for the last eight years, this overreach, where the council voted, the, the Zogby Act says, the mayor has ten days to veto any item in that budget that the council passed. Council passed to give last stadium over seven hundred thousand dollars. The mayor refused to follow what the council did. The council voted to give public service employees the five percent raise, the mayor refused to give them what we voted. So here we go again. Here we go again. The mayor disregarding the action of the council or disregarding the council's authority. I think it's a sad day for the city. And let me close by saying this. If the time could come that I would be the mayor of the city, I would never interfere with the council. As a matter of fact, I would appoint a liaison for my office to work directly with the council. I'm not campaigning. I asked for time to speak. If you want to speak, you can speak, you say whatever you want to. I'm, I'm saying that is a, I'm saying what I would do. You can say what you would do if, if you had a chance. I'm not against you saying what you would do. If you're not going to do nothing, then don't say nothing. I'm opposed to the mayor interfering with the council in any way. Council should have an opportunity to carry out its responsibility without being interfered with, by the administration, period. And the administration should be able to carry out its responsibility without being interfered with by the council, period. Counsel can't direct the administration and the administration can't direct the council. And an administrative employee is completely off the grid. If an administrative employee going to a staff meeting and asks the staff members, cannot, cannot cut them off and say that, yeah, you can do it. And if you go take a look at that member, then nobody bought it, said, dear Councilman Richardson, we would like for you to take some cyber training because we don't want to compromise our system. I can understand that. Offered the mayor to call the council president and say, listen, we're going to be asking the council. Nobody contacted the council president, nobody contacted the council vice president, nobody contacted members of the council. We got a, we got a memo that said C-O-M at the top. C-O-M. And it said out to tell us what to do. You know what I did with it? I put it in the trash because I thought that was an attempt to compromise our system. It didn't have nobody name on it. At the end of it, at the very bottom of the memo, nobody name was on it. And they cut my email off because I didn't obey that. And know what the training said? They, I took the training yesterday, know what training say? That we should trash those type emails. That if you get one like that, you, you ought to trash it. They sent trash to me. From me, I buy, I buy. Mr. President, I, I respect.
Let me, if I could, let me, let me, let me have something to say concerning this particular item. I don't disagree with the notion that a city employee ought not be giving directives to an elected official. I don't disagree with that in spirit or in merit. I, I don't disagree with that thought, theory, hypothesis at all. Mr. Richardson's emails were cut off for a period of almost two weeks. And in a, in a spirit of trying to bring a resolution to this impasse, as council president, I met with Mayor Stimson on yesterday evening and explained to him the circumstances in which Mr. Richardson's emails were disconnected. Some of that information, he was not even a prime star. Some of it, he, he wasn't aware of. He, he was met with resistance by what he felt was a very curt and dismissive city employee who would not even come out the back of the building to address him. Who did not come out and say and explain and try and try to work with him to try to go through the nuances of the test. He simply made a proclamation that the emails were off and that they would stay off until he took the test. And I can't say that if I were in Mr. Richardson's position, I might not have felt that same level of disrespect. But once he informed me as president of this council that that was the situation that he faced, I met with Mayor Stimson, apprised him of that situation, and then we jointly called Mr. Richardson. It wasn't a city employee. It wasn't Scott Kearney. It wasn't Mayor Stimson. I called him as president of this council and said to Mr. Richardson, "If we get your emails cut back on after he's apprised of the circumstance that you felt, would you be willing to come in and take the test?" The very process that Mr. Richardson wanted to take place, which is them working through my office to inform my colleagues that the test needed to be taken, in spirit, that's the process that ended up taking place. Because I did call him. And we did get the emails cut back on prior to him taking the test. And Mr. Richardson came in and successfully passed the test. Nothing's perfect by no stretch of the imagination. We make mistakes. Administration makes errors. We're all human. And I think this, in many instances, is miscommunication. And in many instances, a person's feeling disrespected. And that ought not be the case, whether it's a city employee or whether you're an elected official. If you're earning taxpayer resources, you ought to treat everyone with respect. But dog walks by me and wags his tail. I'm saying, "Good morning, pup, pup." You may disagree with what I want to do. You may come from a different side of the track than me. But if you're under the employ of this city, every person ought to be treated with the highest level of respect. And I think we have this agenda, item on this agenda, because Councilman Richardson faced that level of disrespect. But we used the process to get his emails cut back on so that he could have connectivity to the 30,000 citizens that he represent. And I'm hopeful that as we move forward, we learn from this. If there's testing that needs to take place, we have a chief executive officer of the council, our city clerk. She needs to be notified. Let her inform us. We have an elected president, vice president. We need to be notified. Let us disseminate the information. All of this could be used as a learning opportunity as to how we ought to each state in our own individual lanes. But communication is the key. Putting all the cards on the table so that we all understand exactly why we're doing the things that we're doing. At this point, I think the matter is resolved. I am not in support of moving forward with any further action. Mr. Richardson's emails are unhindered, unfair. He has total access. And he didn't have to get it through a city employee. He didn't have to get it at the order of the mayor. He got it in the very process that he's been proclaiming over the last two weeks.
I have a question if I can.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you.
Ma'am, may I say something? I've got to get on a conference call. And it's not out of disrespect for the conversation that I've got to leave. But this conference call's been scheduled for about a week. And so I apologize for leaving right now. But thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think that I can get my questions answered because I don't see Chief of Staff either. I don't know if he's in the building. I'll still propose it, and that is... And I appreciate hearing what transpired because I wasn't privy to it until just now as far as working with president of the council and then communication with the mayor's office. But I would like to know exactly why the emails are now back up. I would like to hear that. I'm sorry that the mayor's gone, can't answer. Because if the guidance was unless you took the test, so what moved the needle? Can you tell us what transpired?
Well, it's really nothing different than what I just said. We had a meeting with Mayor Stimson, apprised him of the situation and some of the details that I don't think that he was privy to. And he readily agreed. We need to cut the emails back on. And he needs to come in and take the test. So he made the contact with Mr... I mean, Mr. Richardson, am I leaving some detail out?
You're saying the mayor wasn't aware that...
One second.
I'm not following who he is.
Yeah, you called me and put the mayor on the phone who asked me would I come and take the test? And I said, "I'll come and take the test." I said, "But now, I'm not taking no test until my email's cut on." And he said, "Well, we cut the email." "Well, if I cut the email, cut the email."
Was the mayor privy to our legal counsel's opinion as far as...
He stated his opinion in the last week.
I would assume he was, being that this has been on the agenda two weeks. But I can't answer for him.
And I realize that it's resolved. And I appreciate the resolution, being, you know, a council person having access to their emails. I understand keeping our email system away from breaches and inappropriate activity that could cost this community hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I get all that. But I'm just wondering, out of this experience, is there a sense that the administration understands that these are separate offices up here? Each independent offices, as a matter of fact, under the same guidance of the Zogby Bill? And that's what I... Maybe I'll ask it next week when the mayor's present and he'll have time to prepare something. But this isn't the first time. It started with a lawsuit. And we have seen this buildup and activity that basically makes council a rubber stamp. And none of us should be elected to be rubber stamps, ever. It's a disservice to our citizens.
Mr. President, I have a couple of things. One is this resolution, 60606, resolves that all council members of the city council should be allowed unhindered access to their official email accounts. That's all this is saying. So for the council to vote this down, the council members are saying, "Council members should not have unhindered access to their email accounts." It's what the council would be saying. That the mayor was right in cutting Fred's email off. That's what the council would be saying. A no vote on this one. It's same, it's saying, "No. Fred's email should have been cut off by a city employee." It's what they're saying. Because this resolution is saying that all council members of the city council should be allowed unhindered access to their official email. And the answer to that is yes or no. Is it true or false? And council members are saying, "I just..." Good gracious, alive. That's all I'm going to say on that. The other point is, I would like to ask... I ask the assistant city clerk, Mary Ann Murches, to look into this by checking with other cities to see what they're done about this issue of email. And I would like for the assistant city clerk to tell me, "What did you find in the city of Birmingham?" Yeah, I want the speaker so we can hear you.
The city of Birmingham does not require their council members to have to require them to take cyber training. But they do have a separate server for their city officials.
Okay. So what she is saying is that the city council in City Montgomery have their own server. They're not connected to the mayor's server. Our city clerk was connected to the all city. Where if there was something coming up, like the calendar, the council set the calendar, notify all city employees that various dates that they can be off and all. She was cut off. If we had our own server, nobody can cut the city clerk off. I think the council needs to... We, the members of the city council should have their own email server. So this will not happen anymore to anybody under no other future mayor or anymore with the present mayor that we have. Well, I would like for the... I recommend that this council take in consideration, doing just like Birmingham did. Create your own email server and move on. That's what I recommend.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
This is a very simple matter. A very simple matter. Cities and counties and corporations across this country have had their email systems hacked. And most of the time, it occurs because an employee has not understood the danger posed, responded to the wrong email, downloaded the wrong thing. This training was designed to alert all city employees as to the dangers they might encounter in order to help make sure that the city of Mobile wasn't hacked. That the city of Mobile wasn't subjected to ransomware. That the private information of the city employees and the citizens of Mobile were not subject to being hacked. We had 1,700 city employees take the training. Every other city council person took the training. The mayor took the training. And now, we're being asked to approve a resolution that would allow a city council person, either now or in the future, to put the city at risk by failing to take the training. I'm not going to support that. I am not going to support that. I'm not going to support letting one person put the city of Mobile, its employees and its citizens at risk just on the whim of that one person. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President. I have never said that I was against training. Never. I am against a city employee ordering me in one mistake Councilman George Hayes made. It's putting me into the lump with city employees. The city didn't hire me. The people put me down here. Not a hired servant. I was not against the same man writing all city employees under the administration and telling them the same thing. I'm not against that. But when it comes down to an elected official, can't no hired servant, it's like the tail wagging the dog. It ain't nothing shorter than the tail wagging the dog. Now, let's say you own a company and you had 500 employees. It's your company. And some of those employees got together and wrote you a letter and told you what you got to do. And you owned the company. You enjoy that a company. That's what happened to me. The Zogby Act, we the ruling authority of the city of Mobile. The employee writing me. I'm no city employee. I didn't make out no application. I don't have no applications on file up there. I was voted in. Then I had a swing-in ceremony. That's how I got in. The people, the person who wrote me this letter didn't take no oath. Nobody swore he wasn't sworn in. He was a hired city employee. And I believe if he was the head janitor, Councilman Davis would have said the same thing, that he had a right to write Fred that. No. Some things is improper. And because he decided that he was going to let that employee direct him, that's his business. And I said it last week. I've been directed too many times in my life by people who should not have been directing me, telling me what bathroom to go in, what water fountain to drink out of. I will not be directed anymore.
Mr. Richardson, may I ask you a question? If I could.
Mr. President, can I, before you do that...
Wait, hold a minute.
We may want to take a...
Sir?
Did you have a statement, Mr. Williams?
I did have something. I was kind of waiting.
I'm sorry, come on.
It's pretty simple. Some things never change. And truth is hard to identify. And there is a light at the end of the tunnel. Mark this now, November 1st.
I see the light.
Any further... This has been an interesting meeting, oh yes. Uh, Mr. Richardson.
Yes, sir.
Your emails were cut off. And we've got this controversy. Would you not agree that I did call, I initiated the call to you on yesterday evening in order to bring a resolution to this matter? And as a result of that call, not from a city employee because I'm just as much an elected official as you are. As an elected official, I called you. And through us talking, we came to a resolution that ended up with the emails being cut back on.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
If you a suggestion we ought to take a yes or no vote on this?
That's not what I'm asking, Mr. Richardson.
So what would you like for us to... How would you like for us to do? What would you like to be done with this resolution 60606?
Well, that's not the question I ask, Mr. Richardson. The question I ask is would you agree or disagree that it was the phone call that your council president made to you who is just as much a non-employee as you are that ended up with the resolution of your emails being cut back on?
Yes.
Is that a factual statement?
I have said that about five times today.
So it wasn't a city... My point is, it wasn't at the directive of a city employee? That the process that you would... I asked what you want the process to work.
No, it was the city employee. It was the IT manager who wrote me and told me that my email would be cut off. That was the city employee. He's employed by the city. I got that from the IT.
Well, I mean, I can't direct the IT. It took somebody from the administration to direct him because I can, you can't either.
No.
Right.
Right. I agree with that.
Yes, sir. So all I'm saying is, on the face of what's before us, what would you have done differently?
Well, it spares out what should be done, that the council members resolve that council members should be allowed unhindered access to their official city email accounts. This is what this resolution is saying. The council members should have unhindered access to their email accounts. Where the vote no is to say council members should not have... That the mayor, that the city employee was correct. That council members should not have unhindered. Now, what you may, what we may want to do is table it. Now, what you may, what we may want to do is table it, take it off the table, but voting it up and down is going to show who is gutless and who is not.
Mr. Richardson?
I have a question.
Let's rock and roll.
Let's rock and roll.
I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
November 1st.
Okay.
Voluntary.
Okay, I have a question.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. And I wasn't present for the dialogue that took place, but I'm learning a lot that it got resolved, and I'm pleased for that, for the constituents that Mr. Richardson represents to be able to access his office. I just got a little confused, and so I would like some clarity on this. You said, "He did not know what had transpired." When you talked to the mayor, he was not aware that an employee had instructed, had taken down the email? I'm just not clear on that, because I know that it's been resolved. I'm sorry that the mayor's not here, I'll repeat myself. I would like to know what changed. Was it the opinion of our legal council? Or was it the fact that he was unaware that an employee had shut down an elected official's mailbox?
Ms. Rich, at this point, I've gotten about as involved as I'm going to get in email gate. I tried, I put forth a good faith effort to resolve the issues. The emails are back on, and even, you know, you're darned if you do and darned if you don't.
Right, but there's a resolution before us. But I'm trying to, I'm trying to get...
You're going to have to ask Mayor Stimson. I don't know what the mayor knew or didn't know, I don't know what he believes or don't believe. You're going to have to ask him that directly.
Okay. All right, then I'll have to abstain.
Any further discussion?
I have one more thing to say.
Mr. Davis?
In all of my comments today, I have been very careful to observe the rules of the council in making comments, and have abstained from making any personal attacks on any individual on the dais. And I object strenuously to the chair allowing one of the members up here to make the slur that he just made.
I don't have the ability to arbitrate the verbiage coming out of anyone's mouth but my own.
Well...
If I did, a lot of things that are said all across this world wouldn't be said. But I don't appreciate the terminology either, because if a person was gutless, the emails wouldn't be back on.
Yeah, it's good that it's resolved. I would like to move to table this resolution if I could get a second, see if we could get five for that.
Absolutely.
No, we're going to vote it down.
Just put motion in second, all, any discussion?
Is this to table it?
Yes, to table it.
No, you can't, not in order. That's not in order. We have a motion on the floor.
Pardon me, you're right. It's been so much said until we're weighing over way into the deeper end. There's a motion, already a motion on the floor, and we're having discussion on that motion that's been properly motioned and second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Abstain.
The motion fails for lack of five votes. Ma'am City Clerk?
Consent resolutions being introduced for the first time, 03607 through 27626.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of items 03607 through 27626.
We probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03607 and 608 are reappointing and appointing Brenda Jackson to the Mobile Library Board, Tammy Howell, Stacy Yon, Terry Mitchell to the Ad Hoc Animal Shelter Citizens Advisory Committee. 27609 designate election officers for the August 24th municipal election. 58610 and 611 are assessing costs for removal of weeds and authorizing removal of weeds, Groups 47 and 1615. 03625 appoint Andrew Bluehouse to the Mobile Tree Commission. 27626 designate a new emergency polling place for Ward 5-4 Fondy Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
CIP resolutions being introduced for the first time, 21612 through 21613.
By council rules, these two measures will hold over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 08614 through 6622.
By council rules, these measures will hold over for one week.
Call for public hearings. 41623, call for public hearing to rezone property located at 6636, 6638, 6640, 6666, 6680, and 6692, Oshel Road, north side of Oshel Road, 520 feet west of the north terminus of Dickens Ferry Road from R1 to R3, scheduled August 31st. 41624, call for public hearing to consider the vacation of an alley located parallel and adjacent to the south property line of Lot 4, Edgewood Park, scheduled September 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcements.
Ms. Rich?
Oh, thank you. I would just like to verify the fact that the council will not be meeting on Election Day, which is August 24th, but instead hold a regular meeting on August 25th, and that the clerk's office get that word out to the community and to anyone who needs to be present at our meeting that day. Thank you.
That is the plan, correct, Ma'am City Clerk?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
No announcements.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, I would like to announce to the 30,000 citizens in District 1 that my email is now on, so you can resume sending me your pressing issues as you have in the past. I'm sorry that for the last two weeks, I was not in a position to respond to your emails because I didn't receive any. So, but my email is on as of yesterday evening, and I'm looking forward to hear from all of you and back in, back at responding to your requests. And about 99% of all the requests I receive are administrative matters in the first place. Send them, keep doing what you're doing, and I will send them where they need to be, where they need to go in order for you to have your issues addressed. Thank you, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
No, thank you.
Do I hear most?
Second.
We probably moved in second that we were adjourned, any discussion? You're in on, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The meeting is adjourned.